Travis.
Here.
Nate.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
Political allegiance.
Political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Need a motion for the consent agenda. First of all, um, therefore, I see a set public hearing for October 12th. You mean, you don't want it set for today, do you?
Oh, no. Yep, you're right. Sorry, it's October 26th. I'm sorry. Yep. Typo. It should be two weeks from today. Because I'll have the draft and everything. It's with the lawyers right now. And I'll have a finished product.
I have just a question. Are we sure that it should be the 26th then? Because if it's with the lawyer, shouldn't we have it one meeting to discuss? And then the public hearing?
Well, we're going to see the draft of it tonight, right?
No.
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 Well, I thought that's what it said. It's with the lawyers, so it's not.
It's with the lawyers, so we aren't going to have it.
Yeah, you're right.
So I think we should have a meeting where we get to see it and look at it.
All right. So you want to see it? Okay, we can talk.
We'll talk about it during the discussion.
Okay.
So do I have a motion for the consent?
So moved.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It's time, place for discussions or not on the agenda, with a time limit of three minutes each. Do we want to talk? Pretty easy.
This is my very first time here, so.
Welcome. Glad you're here.
Welcome.
Are you here to complain about something?
I'm right.
Yes, I know what we're talking about.
You might not be invited back.
You'll always be invited back. You might not want to come, but you'll always be invited.
5A, update from Southeast Lynn Community Center regarding after-school program.
Okay, do I need this?
No, you can. Loud enough.
Loud enough?
Hmm?
Okay.
There you go.
So I just wanted to come and give an update. As you guys know, each year you fund our after-school program, $5,000 a year. We haven't started it yet this year, so with the pandemic, we've been really focused on essential services. So food pantry, meals to seniors, support to senior clients, and then crisis assistance. So we've started having a lot more requests for help with rent or utilities or water bills for people that are out of work or have fewer hours, that kind of thing. So we've been very focused on that. This summer, we had a grant from Lynn County to do a daily program for kids, and we had to switch that to a virtual program. And so we tried having activity bags that they could come pick up each week and some online things. And the participation was just really low for that. So by the end of the summer, I think we have six or eight kids that were consistently participating in that. So then in late July, our after-school coordinator resigned. And then as we were looking at this year, with the library closed, we usually share space with them. So our space was limited. So it's hard as being able to have the kids there and keep them distanced and stuff within the building. We don't have space to do that. We talked to Julie, our contact, Julie Light, at the school. And she said they're really working hard to keep the kids in specific cohorts during the school day and not mixing with different grades and stuff. So obviously with the after-school program, it'd be kids from all different grades together. So she felt that if we had them there in person, it would kind of negate what they're trying to do at the school personally. So. And I did try to reach out to as many of the families who participated in the past as possible. And there were only two families that expressed partial interest for this year. So just wanted to kind of update you guys of where that's at. Also, I really feel like, so our, our mission is serving children and seniors and low-income families. Right now, we're just seeing a lot of need from our seniors. So we just finished up our first quarter of the fiscal year. And with our food pantry, right now, 44% of the households we're serving are either elderly or disabled. And last year at this time, that was only 24%. So we're really seeing that the elderly, the disabled, the homebound are the people who are really relying on us right now during this crisis. So, so that's where our focus has been. So just wanted to update you on that, find out what questions or concerns you have. Right now, our board is thinking that we just revisit it like in January and see where things are at. But obviously, we're sitting on the money that you gave us. So to bring it back to you that if you want us to just hold on to those funds in anticipation of being able to resume the program, or give the funds back, or if you'd like to see them shifted to crisis assistance or anything like that, so.
Do you, um, do you need to, do you think you need to shift them somewhere else?
Um, right now, we have, we, so we got some money from Hills Bank that we're using for crisis assistance right now. It's just kind of hard to predict over the next several months what that might look like, how many requests we're going to have. So right now, I don't think we have a desperate move for it. I just wanted to give that as an option for down the road if you.
Yeah, because I, um, you know, like you say, you know, they're trying to keep all the kids, you know, in the groups. And so, so you're not doing it. I mean, and no one knows when this is going to be over with.
Right.
You know, so I mean, we're, I would say, you know, if you need it more for crisis situations, I mean, I, I don't see a problem. You know, if you come back to us and say, you know, can we use that money that was allocated to that? I mean, because I don't, I don't see this program starting up anytime soon.
And I hate to look at hiring somebody with this much uncertainty, you know, just to.
Yeah, I agree.
Was that money earmarked specifically for that?
It was. So you give us 15,000 general funding and then 5,000 designated for that program.
Okay.
And I'm just going to put a little plug out here because I did not know this was a thing. So I have always donated my Amazon money to the American Cancer Society. So today, I saw, and I don't know when it was posted, but I saw it today. Southeast Lynn shared a link on their Facebook page where you could actually go in. Amazon Prime Days are coming up on the 13th and 14th, and everybody's going to shop. And you can actually go in and designate Southeast Lynn to be the organization that gets your money from the Amazon Prime Days. It was literally one click. I clicked on the link. It said, "Do you want to switch to Southeast Lynn?" I said, "Yes," that was it. I know last year, I, because you get a statement, I know that I gave $313 to the American Cancer Society solely off my shopping from Amazon. I didn't do anything different. It was just everything that I buy off of Amazon. So it is literally something that you can do without having to give any extra money or do anything different than you already do, and it will go to a really good cause. So Christina, can we share that on the city Facebook page? And I'll tell Drayton to share it on the Park and Rec page, too, because that would just be a really good way to get that information out.
Do you guys have a website? Can you put it on yours as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was on our social.
It was on your Facebook.
That's how you saw it. It was theirs. Okay, okay.
I follow their Facebook page, so I saw it on their Facebook page. But, you know, not everybody follows Southeast Lynn, not every. So if we could get it on all of the city stuff, then they're bound to see it somewhere. And it's a super easy way to give them some money. And obviously, you know, a chunk of money.
Yeah. And speaking of funding, I don't know, I know John and I have talked about this, but I don't remember if it's been all of you, but we are a United Way funded agency again, so we did succeed in our.
Lynn County came through? Because they pulled it. Yeah, Lynn County or United Way of Eastern Iowa, whatever they call themselves.
So when I came aboard three years ago, they had just lost the funding, like weren't successful. And so this was our first, because they do a three-year.
So they're back.
Yeah, so we're back.
That's awesome.
So I just did my United Way stuff as well, and it was on there for me to designate my stuff to you guys, yeah.
That's good to hear.
And some people's works match that. So if you work for a company and you're able to donate to them, you may be able to go to your company and say, "Hey, I'm going to give $500 to Southeast Lynn. Do you match?" And they would match your $500. So you just need to check with your employer and see if they would match.
Anything else for it?
Hearing holds for now and come back.
Well, I mean, you know, if you do need that money for the, I mean, just, you know, come two weeks before you need it or whatever. That you think you're going to need it. Like I said, I don't see the after-school program.
I don't either, and I have no problem with you guys using the money where it's needed right now, because we know that there's a lot of need.
Agreed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and possible action regarding downtown farmer's market. Kelly Box had called me, or it was Thursday, Friday, whenever I called you, last week. She asked about closing the parking off on the north side of Main Street on November 7th from, I think it's 2 to 5, 2 to 5. They want to do like a farmer's market between At East Island Station, who is a photography.
Casey Cobb.
And there's a couple other businesses. They just want to close that parking off. And I, um, you know, I know we talked about having maybe closing off for like restaurants to sit outside and stuff. I said, "I don't, I don't see a problem," I said, "but it has to go before council." So I told her I'd put it on the agenda, and then she said, I asked her if she'd be here, and she could have, but then she didn't bring her kids in. So she said, I told her, I said, "I'll just handle it because I know basically what you're going to say."
That's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday. It's the first Saturday.
Do you guys have a problem with that?
No.
Just, are we going to set them up and take barricades down, or are they going to do that?
I don't know.
What's the hours? Do we know? Two to five.
Let's mention that you're not stopping traffic.
No, it's just, just the parking.
Right, it's just the parking.
So it'd be nice, it'd be nice to have it barricaded, I think.
Right.
I mean, I can, I, they can probably set it up. I mean, they could probably get enough.
Which, which barricades do you want to use? Do you want to use concrete block ones, or do you want to use?
I think we could just use the sawboards.
Does the police department have a problem with that? No? No?
Okay, and said, "I don't work 2 to 5 on a Saturday." I'm not working that Saturday, sir.
So why don't you check with them first and, and find out if they want us to set that up or not? So I would hate to just leave it all out there and then they'd be like, "Well, I'll talk to you."
I'll talk to Kelly and just talk to you.
Yeah.
But I mean, I guess.
Well, I make a motion to approve the closing of the street.
Motion is second.
Well, we're not closing the street, right? We're just closing the parking, the parking, sorry.
North side of the street.
Yeah, north side of the street from 2 to 5 on November 7th.
It'll probably actually be like noon, whatever, noon to 6, whatever, by the time they get it tore down. So I've got a motion and a second. Sarah.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Possible action setting public hearing for 2080, Police Services new 2080 agreement from Auburn and Lisbon Police Departments on October 26, 20. Discussion.
Well, like I said, I would like that to be moved to the first meeting in November so that we would have an opportunity to discuss it before we have the public hearing.
So that would be November 9.
9.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it's with Mark. It's going back and forth between Mark and Crystal Pound, who's a.
Who's Mount Vernon's attorney.
She's a Mount Vernon attorney. And we addressed, one of the things I did address was the things that were brought up by the council in here the last time. So that stuff's being, we're trying to work that out with them through the agreement right now. So we'll see when I get it back, what it looks like, but I'll have it for the next meeting. Mark thought it'd be ready for the next meeting, so.
So we're, we're going to move that to the 9.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess we're not doing any action on that. Discussion regarding line of site plantings.
Well, I'm assuming maybe this is on here because of my request. Yeah, so I keep getting phone calls about a house that has plantings in what is being considered the right-of-way. I have talked to John about it because I know that he's, you know, been involved with this kind of stuff a lot. And he's right. This council, if we're going to address it, we need to address it with everybody. We have other people in town who are in violation of it as well, and we don't enforce it.
I don't, I mean, I drove by that house before I came down, as a matter of fact. I don't know what the right-of-way is on there since there's no sidewalk.
I don't either. Well, there is on the front side.
Yeah, on the front side.
And so I don't know if the plantings by the pole would be. The thing is, is I don't know what is planted there, so I have no idea how tall that stuff is going to get. I mean, I don't know.
Some kind of shrub.
It probably gets over two foot over the part of the roadway. I don't think they're in violation.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I read in, in the cover. I mean, you can plant it in the right-of-way, it just can't be over two feet, two feet or two.
I talked to Christine about putting it in the newsletter and the people, they're going to plant something in the right-of-way. It's not really their property. It's the city's. They come in and check with us. Because we have one example that thinks we don't want it.
And I don't, on those streets, I don't even know what our right-of-way is on.
I don't either.
Well, that's what I'm curious of, is, is this going from the street or is it going from the sidewalk? It looks like it's from the street. 25 feet from the point of intersection to the right-of-way line is what I'm going to say.
So 25 feet is below your street.
So what we do is you go off of the accessory site, and that'll give you a point of reference. But normally, you know what setbacks are for the house, so that tells you how far off the house has to be from the property line. And that'll tell you the street or not. Jeff, you said you think it is in the right-of-way?
That one, yeah.
Is it in the right-of-way?
Yeah.
Just so that we're all clear, because I can think in my head of two right now that are, we're talking about this way, right? Down here, this direction?
Yes.
Okay, because there's another one down here that probably has some violations that we've fought for years and years and years and years and years and years and years.
There's another house on that same street, three blocks down, that has three ginkgo trees planted in the right-of-way there.
So that's what I'm saying. We're probably going to come across more than just what we've been told about or complained about. But, um, you know, we got to figure out, we're either going to have to enforce it or we're not.
Well, we can't, I mean, according to our code, they can, they can plant it, it just can't be above two feet. So I mean, until they get.
Well, at least one of them, I would say, does have stuff that's above two feet, and I don't know about the one you're talking about.
They're trees.
Oh.
But they're juvenile trees. They're, they look like they were planted maybe this year even.
But they're definitely taller than two feet.
If they're not now, they will be soon.
Trees are allowed. But certain kinds of trees are not. As you can see around the trunk, but it's things that are plum trees.
At the bottom.
Like arborvitus.
Like vision or.
pine or something.
Right. Fruit-bearing trees aren't allowed, are they?
As long as the fruit is less than half an inch or two quarters of an inch, something like that. So crab apples with very small fruit are allowed. But a regular crab apple tree that has a larger fruit would not be allowed because we don't want it to nest.
Well, we just need to, you know, decide if we want to look at this or if we just want to, you know, whatever. I think John would be a good one to be in charge of it because he knows the code better than anyone.
It's just, you gotta decide, but it's a high priority right now since we're going into the.
I was going to say, not many people are planting right now.
I mean, I mean, and that's something I think we just need to educate the people on.
Right.
That when they do.
Maybe we need, just need to post the ordinance on Facebook. Just friendly reminder.
And it might be a good timings. A lot of that might be a good thing to do, like in the spring, too, when plantings are going on.
So I've talked to some people that have violation for years, suggested they have some low-growing dianthus. You know, they like the taller stuff, so we're going to have a problem with some individuals. We just got to decide whether or not.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, I think we, I think we're trying to make a point clear that we are going to go by our code. That's the law of Lisbon.
I just want to make sure we do it the same way for everybody all across the board.
Across the board. I mean, that, you know, I mean, I hate to see some places have to take stuff down or not be able to put something up, but I mean, we got to go by our code. That's the law of Lisbon.
Yeah, and this.
I mean, and our, our hands are tied on this, too. I mean, we can't just change the laws of Lisbon.
And we have some kids coming home from school, probably a southern foreigner. And some little kid, Ross is, and people won't see him until the kid's in the street because of the plantings.
And I know, like, down on the other end of town, I mean, like I said, Durachio kind of took care of this problem. But at one time, you couldn't even, you couldn't even walk the sidewalk because it was so overgrown onto the sidewalk from, from both their yard and from the right-of-way that you couldn't even, you couldn't, you had to go out and around.
We did send a notice to that person.
Before the Durachio.
Before the Durachio. Yeah, before the Durachio.
Like I said, Durachio.
Yeah.
Durachio took care of that problem.
After.
Who does the grass enforcement now?
You.
Public police.
Thanks for asking.
So why don't we just go around to these properties and take the code? Why don't you treat it all the same?
Because I don't think they're considered.
And I think that was the plan. We should do that, and I thought that that was the plan, you know, years, years back that we were going to do that. It just kind of went to the wayside.
We've had our zoning administrator do it. I know, um, I've done two mowing letters since I've been here.
Before. Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a good idea. I think we could have somebody just basically drive and identify trouble areas and then just get information to them.
I can get you a list. I can give me a couple weeks.
And it's not like we have to give them a letter that says, "Fix it or else." I mean, we just give them some education and then give them time to take care of it on their own. And then if they don't take care of it on their own, then, you know, we may have to.
There's two of them that are bigger problems than just the lawn.
Right.
One I might talk to you about.
Yeah.
I think you're going to run into some problems on some, certain places that have had them for years, that we've never done anything. I think we're going to end up in court on it because we've let it go for years and let it, and you know, you know the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, we all know that one.
So, I mean.
There's like over by Travis, there's a tree in somebody's garden with branches or six feet off the ground. I mean, you can't, somebody takes a camper or a big truck down there, a fire truck.
Well, a couple of years ago, I think it might have been Mike Williams, went around and tagged trees that were within 13 feet of the ground, above a sidewalk, and 18 feet, I think, on the street or something like that. That's, I think, part of the code somehow.
I don't think it's that high, though.
I might have the numbers wrong, but.
Yeah, but you're right. And we've, you know, when we've talked to, you know, homeowners before, and specifically that one, and nothing ever got done because we couldn't make them do it, but.
Can't we put a spin on it, like, since the storm, we've realized that there's just.
As to.
As to, like, I mean, I think we can, as a city, put a spin on it that with the whole storm thing, there could have been some possible, I don't know. Do you see what I'm saying?
I see where you're going. I, I, John's got the best target.
Well, we can't put the spin on it now because we just told them that's what we're going to do, so. Okay, let's take back what we're going to do and put a spin on it and then go that route.
So really, is it kind of moot at this point? Because we are getting into the fall, so it's probably something we need to revisit.
It's kind of mute. It's kind of mute, but I think we just need, it needs to be educated. I mean, we need to educate the people of where they can plant, what they can plant.
Well, how about we just have them go identify the trouble areas, bring it back to us, and let us see how many? Well, maybe just a couple, like maybe John and somebody else could be on a little committee or something. And see, and it's not going to be me, and see how big of a problem we actually have. And then we could give them some education this year so that when it comes time for planting next year, you know, they've already got the information that they need, and maybe we wouldn't have as big of a problem.
Could be. You're going to have to do it twice, though.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Well, it's, maybe it's a permanent part of our website. Planting compliance for the city of Lisbon.
We've always encouraged homeowners to trim their tree limbs up so people will walk under them. I think we said eight foot and 13 foot.
Yeah.
That's probably the right numbers.
I can't remember for sure. Also, we said, "We really don't want you out there on a ladder and calling off and getting hurt" to ignore to do the trimming, especially over the street. So the city has done a lot of over the street and some over the sidewalks that needed the three-four.
Oh, was it probably three years ago, Jason, Jason did the whole town?
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody did the whole town.
Yeah, we did it with summer open, block through. I mean, it's on the docket for again this fall, but.
I mean, it's an ongoing thing. You're going to do it every year.
Well, do you guys want them to just kind of give them some direction to go check it out and see if we have a, a problem that's bigger than we think it is?
Did you offer Brandon to help us out with that?
Yeah.
Is just come back with a list? Because you're on patrol, you'll see that kind of thing. Because we have that opportunity.
Well, I take a drive every day.
Set back on that. I know that there's, so far from the intersection, you can't just say, "It's in our apartment."
Didn't you read?
25 feet.
It's 25 feet, but from what line was, was the debate, I think, and?
I think 25 feet center, center of road.
25 feet from the center of road? I think it's, I think it's farther than that.
It's farther than the corner back.
The corner of the road back, right?
Yeah, along the curb. Is that how we changed it? I can't remember.
Well, what if they don't have a curb?
That's where we kind of ran into some issues.
Yeah. Also, at one time, we said along the lock line.
I think the bottom line, if it's an issue, it's an issue.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah. I don't think you need to take it here. I think we just drive around and see what's the problem and what.
Yeah.
I think Brandon could bring us some great information. Do we want to review it before we make a decision on anything, then?
I think we should. Let's see. I think we should see how big of a problem we have. Let's see the, let's see what kind of problem trouble we have.
Two of the biggest.
And then assess from there.
Two of the houses I'm watching the most have no one in them.
It has no one in them?
Two of the ones are the most problematic, have no one in them. One's a newer house.
Are the homeowners, like, local? Well, one, yeah, they both are. They both are.
Well, those are the two. There's a newer one in the new, in one of the newer sections that I don't quite know what the deal is. What I had to call him to mow once.
Two of them are definitely local, and I know that, that we've been trying to catch one of the owners to serve some papers, and we just can't get it nailed down. But I know he's local because I keep seeing him post on Facebook and stuff like that. And these houses have more problems than just their grass is a little overgrown. I mean, these houses potentially maybe need to be condemned.
The one has deterioration on the outside. That's, when you look closely, it's fairly more substantial. When you start to look at it closely, you see rot.
Well, that's, we can turn that into public dot.
Lynn County, isn't that like inspections?
Yeah, I'm about, I'm about there with one of them.
Why don't we do that now?
The other one is a real problem for the neighbors.
Probably on home. I know we can do it on rentals.
Well.
But it is a rental. Is it a rental? No.
Well, I mean, the specific one we're talking about is not a rental. It's just not occupied by any, they're not renting it. They're just sitting on it.
They used to have their kids living in it. The owners used to have their kids living in it on one of them. And then the other one, the owner actually lived in it, and now he doesn't live there anymore. And he basically hasn't, I mean, there's still trees and stuff from Durachio that have not been touched, and they're actually over onto the neighbor's property, and it's causing quite a, quite a stir.
Well, I think that's at a point where we can step in.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it depends on how far we want to go with it. It's 650, 7. I mean, I've done a lot of these where I've had poor, poor housing. I mean, worse than these. And I mean, we just have never done that here yet, so I just look how it's been done here in the past and how you proceeded with it. But a 650, 7A of the Iowa code allows cities, you know, to take action on it, basically what they call abandoned houses where there's nobody been living in for some time. So you do have that. It's in the law.
Can you still get a water bill there?
We looked it up.
All right, do we, do we want to?
Well, then we need to take, you need to take some action on that, then. And as for the plantings, he's going to give us a list. We're going to look at it, and then we'll make a decision based off of that.
And that lists in two weeks, then? Next meeting?
Yeah.
Back on the agenda, then? Okay. Thank you, Brandon.
Discussion regarding employee handbook.
Well, it came out of the meeting, and we thought we'd get a start, so I thought we'd just jump right in. And the first thing I threw in there is the org chart.
The org chart, I think, really needs to be looked at.
Put in an old one and a proposed new one, just some idea what we might be looking at.
Because I think the old chart didn't have a Parks and Rec director on it.
No.
Neither of them do.
Yeah.
No, the, the new one does.
The new one does.
The new one does.
Oh, hell.
Couldn't be any bigger there, buddy.
Well, I saw police chief on the first one, so I assume.
What does police chief all on the news?
Well, that assumes that that's going, so if, if, you know, if we stay with having it on force, then it'd just be added back. I just have it off here for now, but. I just have it go in as another.
Been looking at combining then.
I just put it in similar to where it is in the current chart.
I guess the only thing I would say is the police chief one, I mean, you had to add that one in just in case something happens. I'm not saying that we don't combine. I'm not saying that in three years, we dissolve and come back with our own police force. So I mean, I think that needs to be, I don't know if we come back at a later time and revisit it when it does happen or what, but.
Well, this might be something that we hold off on until we do know what we're doing, rather than take it out and then have to come back and put it back on, or leave it in and have to come back and take it off in a month or two. Maybe we just don't mess with the organizational chart just yet until we know exactly what we're doing.
Besides the police, does it look okay otherwise?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I think it looks fine.
So, maybe we can just wait a month until we have that answer.
We'll hold off on that for sure.
Is, for the next meeting, is there a particular part you want?
Um, I would say, um, there is a few things. I'm gonna go from the most.
Why don't we just start at the beginning and go through the whole thing?
We can, but where do we stop?
We're gonna do two chapters a night, three chapters a night or whatever. I mean, if they're simple chapters where they're not gonna.
That's fine. Whatever. I don't care.
I mean, you, I mean, she sent us late. She sent us, every one of us on email.
I don't have it.
We had it. I mean, if you want to do three chapters a night, I mean, if you want to do one chapter a night, I mean. I mean, it just, instead of just jumping around and fixing stuff, why don't we just do it in order?
Well, and I think that's why he started with the org chart because that's first.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll bring in the next two in for the next meeting.
Okay.
So, I'm good.
Yep.
Discussion regarding the city website.
So, we talked about this during our goal setting meeting and I don't know what we can do to make the city website more user friendly, but it is not user friendly at all. And I think more than anything, it's not user friendly on a mobile device. I think it, I think a desktop version, you can probably get to everywhere that you want to go by clicking around a little bit, but on a mobile device, it's really bad. So, I don't know, you know, Christina, you would know better than anybody here about the website. I don't know if we're in a contract with somebody for that site.
Not necessarily a contract. We're with GovDeals for it, obviously, since it's a .gov and that just kind of constricts a little of the stuff that we can do. And in order to do an update, we have to do it through them and that does cost money. Like, we can't even change the pictures on it.
Yeah.
The banner pictures without that costing us money.
I know, and that bothers me. Do you know, because we can't have a .gov site without going through them.
Correct.
Do we have to have a .gov site?
No.
So, we have a .org or something?
We tried once about, what, three years ago, I was about right, doing lisblinlife.org with Scott Cannon and it was a mess. It was not convenient for us to update it. It was not friendly to somebody that was not huge into computers like Scott is. Like, he did, he could figure out how to update it, but anybody else trying to use it could not.
Well, the other problem with the site as it sits right now is when I checked it, it doesn't have schema. So, it's not a smart site. It doesn't have the capabilities. If I say, hey Siri, I want to, you know, check out the city of Lisbon, your website or the site as it sits right now cannot respond to me talking. It only can respond to somebody typing.
And maybe it's time to look to see if .gov has an upgrade. We have not touched it with .govs for a long time.
And also, I don't like the fact that they charge us to make changes. We should have a website through a company who will do it and then it's all inclusive. Like, we would pay them a monthly maintenance fee, but we wouldn't have to pay for changes. We wouldn't have, we would get unlimited changes. We would never have to pay. And there's probably a do it yourself tool where we could actually go in and update pictures and stuff like that, too, you know, without even having to go through whoever it is that's manning the site.
We can update the pages and we just can't update the pictures on the front banner page without paying a fee to do that.
And that's.
And that shouldn't be.
That shouldn't be.
Yeah.
I just.
Why would you do this? Why don't we have, Christina, can you look into it and get back to us in a month?
Can you look into it both ways, Christina? Look at .gov, .deals or whatever and see what they have for a package, but then also look to see if we went with like a .org that we could find a company that would do that for us. And I would rather have, and this is just me personally, but I would rather have a monthly maintenance fee website than a, we'll pay $10,000 and we'll build it and then we'll charge you for changes, like a set it and forget it site.
And I, and after our last meeting with Pat, I looked, there's a place called Civic Plus. They focus just on government websites and they have a lot of very nice, powerful websites that are mobile compatible. They've just got a lot of features, online paying as far as like registration for Parks and Rec, things like that. So, if you want to take a look at that, it's called, I think it's called Civic Plus.
They've been a vendor on a lot of our city stuff.
Okay, yeah. I mean, they do, they power websites, so.
And Christina, important things to me would be, it has to be secure, which I can't imagine that any company would try to sell you a website that's not secure today, but I'm still seeing it, so it could happen. So, it's got to be a secure website. It's got to be mobile friendly, tablet friendly, and it has to be scheme. It has to be a smart site. It has to be a site that's responsive to talk. In probably six to eight months, Google is going to make that a requirement. And if your site's not responsive like that, you're gonna get lower rankings and things like that. And I know that it probably doesn't really matter for us where we show up on the rankings for a Google search, but.
Would you pick that? Ohio and Lisbon, Illinois and all those called us, so it must be their first top.
I saw Maine and a couple ones like that, so.
And Ohio's the main one.
Yeah, and then the e-commerce add-ins, we need to have that, too.
And as far as the e-commerce, we should have links. So, like, I don't know how you're thinking about having people pay for Park and Rec, kind of like our water bill. That's just a, that's just a link from the vendor who does that payment. So, if you are gonna have somebody, if you, like, in a non-city way, let's say that I have to own a business and I want to take your payment through PayPal. PayPal gives me a link that is unique to me and I can just have that put on my website, that link put on my website. So, I don't know that the website has to have e-commerce because we're not gonna sell anything, but whoever you guys decide to go through to collect payment for Park and Rec and stuff like that has to be able to provide us a link to put on our site.
What about Venmo?
What?
Because that's everything. That's all anybody goes with anymore.
Well.
It's ridiculous.
I mean, you're talking Venmo, PayPal, all, you know, those types of things. I personally don't have Venmo, but I have PayPal. But now you've got Cash App coming around. I mean, if you tried to zero in on all of those individual ones, you would have to have links for literally everything, where we should be able to find a vendor that would allow people to pay with a credit card, pay with their PayPal account. When you buy something, you'll see that it says pay with your PayPal, but you never see it say pay with your Venmo. Very rarely.
You're right.
It's usually PayPal.
Person to person.
And others are not quite loving this yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can see how miserable it is to pay with your card.
All right, let's have Christina look at that and get back to us.
That sounds good.
Discussion regarding goal studying report. It's in our packet. I think it was very good. I thought it was very good.
If everybody's okay with what's in there, I'll go ahead and get a resolution together for the next meeting more, put the more stamp of approval on it.
There's just one slight change. The goal about fixing the history center, the library should be added.
Okay. And I did have the tack pointer come today, by the way.
What I thought was most impressive is how, I mean, this is all gonna change in a year, but this council sitting up here, we really are kind of in sync and on the same page and have the same goals and, you know, it's, it is usually rare when you have six people or five people, you know, that everybody's kind of on the same page. And I thought it was pretty interesting that we kind of all were.
Relatively close.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll be ready for the next meeting.
Possible third and final reading of ordinance 05-2020, Urban Chickens and Ducks. Do I have a motion for a third and final reading?
You do.
Second.
Motion is second. John?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Nay.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Public hearing on proposal to enter into a water revenue loan and disbursement agreement. Resolution 50-2020, taking additional action with respect to water revenue loan and disbursement agreement and authorizing, approving and securing the payment, payment of $480,000. Water revenue loan dispersment agreement, anticipation project note. What's this about?
This is about the well. So, this is the planning. We're not borrowing 480,000. That's the up to number. So, this is for the planning and design of the new well. And this was started in the transition.
This is the well that's part of the complex?
Well. We think it's gonna go up there. He has to cite it. We don't for sure have a site picked out yet.
But this is part of it, is picking the site, doing all the.
Doing the design and everything else. Engineering work. That's what this, and we're not, again, we're not doing 480. It's up to. That's just how they do for the planning and design.
This ain't drilling the well.
No, no, this is everything we need to get over ducks in a row, paperwork, permitting and all that stuff. And then you'll, then you'll know exactly how much we need.
Do we anticipate it being up to?
No.
480?
First of all, I need to go into a public hearing.
Thank you.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Now, motion is second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Okay, now we're talking about the resolution I just talked about, so. Anybody else got any questions about it? No, motion to go out of public hearing.
Yep. Yep, second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Okay, so now, do I have, do I have a motion to do this?
Still moved.
The motion by John, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
All right. Correspondents? Anything?
No.
No. City engineer report. Take public works report.
Dave got tied up in a water plant startup, so that's why I did not hear. Highway 30, DOT and him agreed upon their formatting for the payment of us taking over 30. He's waiting for Ames to get the letter sent to him at that point. If it's what he agrees, should be on there. He'll bring it to you guys. You guys will locate and send back, so he's thinking within the month that should all be. Nobody really has a timeframe because it is in Ames and they're kind of spread in right now, so that's where we're at with that. Let's see, what I have is we're still working on, well, he's also working on our spiral screen with our sanitary wipes and that problem we have going on down there. You guys know it broke. I told you it was gonna be pricey to fix. I held off on fixing it until we can make sure that if we do fix it with the upgrades, it is gonna fix our problem. If not, I didn't want to have to come back and tell you we needed more money to do something different. So, we're working to try to make sure what we get is gonna be capable enough to handle our problem with our population. We still don't have alarms for our water system, so there's no way for them to communicate with anybody on if the wells are supposed to kick on and they don't kick on, so we're still going back and forth checking notes throughout the night to make sure that our tower is full.
I mean, you don't have alarms.
So, basically, if they called for water because of the pressure of the tower and wells don't kick on, they normally would call me. And if it doesn't get me to answer the phone, then.
Why, why don't we have one?
Uh, the deratio. Took out the antennas.
Do, when do you anticipate getting those fixed?
Right now, we're in the process of getting fiber board to all of our sites.
So.
That's okay.
Yeah.
True. Is your mechanic still?
Yes.
You said, yeah.
So, once they get the fiber there, then we'll have to have ESCO come in with their control boxes to make it a secure site, so not everybody can get on there, but.
Did you ask them to kind of make that a priority?
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
It's, there's just a lot of hoops to jump through to get this. Mechanic feels rushing, getting everything bored in like they're supposed to. But as far as ESCO getting all their Ps and Qs ready, there's a lot of old software that they gotta try to make compatible, new stuff, add a cost effective way for us. So, that's what we're trying to go with. I don't know if you guys heard or not, but our chipper did break down on us last week. I think it's some main bearing, rod bearing issue that went. We took the clutch apart. We tried it here to see if it was maybe just the clutch came apart inside. We took that off, fired it up. Now, it's, it's inside the motor. We have the motor at the shop. We're gonna tear it apart. A new motor's 28,000. Three times as much as we paid for the machine. So, we're, we're gonna see if we can rebuild it and get a couple more years out of life. But we did put some, we put some years on it during the deratio, so. We normally, when we do brush, on a normal brush pickup, we're six dumps on a heavy brush. Each house, we were dumping a truck, so we were chipping that much at each house. So, we put quite a few, quite a few extra years on that machine.
Can we claim it in our deratio loss?
We're looking at that. We're seeing what we'll be with the dollar sign, so.
That's open and ongoing still.
Yep.
Yeah, because they extended the FEMA.
Well, yeah.
They extended some FEMA stuff.
I was gonna talk about that in my report a little bit. Yeah, FEMA, I'm working with them. I have a phone call with them on Wednesday.
Anything else, Travis?
Last is leaves. I understand that people still have stuff in their backyard. We're getting the leaves, but it's a leaf vac. It's not a brush vac. So, if you guys get complaints that we have only picked up part of their leaves, it's because we are hovering above the piles. There's obviously brush in there. I don't want to have to tell you that we think we shut our leaf vac, so. That's all aluminum parts on the inside of that. It's not meant to handle any wood, rocks. I know raking is hard, but they have to, you know, they just a little, a little extra time on their effort there to make it easier and our equipment lasts longer.
Okay. Are you getting any applications that you know of for the job?
We've got a handful.
When do we close it?
What's a handful?
Three, two, three.
When do we close it?
So, two weeks. We don't close it.
We don't close it up until it's filled. The problem is, is Chris, his last day is the 26th, or he has to go to them on the 26th, so.
26.
So, that's the 23rd.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll be fine with that. He said, we think we gotta run it for two weeks anyway before we can do any correspondence.
Yes, it has to be run for two weeks.
So, we, I mean, as soon as we can do anything, it's two weeks from when it hits the paper.
Which was Wednesday? Was it Wednesday that it was?
I don't think it got in last week's.
Oh, it didn't get in last week's?
Not in the Sun. This'll be the first week for the Sun, the Gazette it got into, though.
Okay, okay.
So, do we gotta wait two weeks for the Sun one or two weeks for the Gazette one?
Is it two weeks from posted?
I think it just says two weeks from posted in ordinance.
So, we're, yesterday was a week.
I'm not sure about that. I haven't really checked that before. I always thought it'd be in the paper for two weeks.
Well, the Gazette is the paper.
Gazette ends on.
Oh, is it listed?
I think it has to be. County always dealt with that, so I know, I know it has to be.
Well, here's the thing, is you could start interviewing, I mean, if, you could start interviewing before the two weeks is up.
Just don't close it.
You just can't close it.
Okay.
So, that's what we're.
Especially if you found, if you have some good candidates.
That's where we're at.
Anything else?
Nope.
Park and Rec Director.
I got a quote today for those soccer rules that I talked to you guys about last week. They gave me an even bigger discount, so instead of getting two for $240, I'm getting each one individually for $97.
How many ordered?
I ordered 10 of them, so it's gonna be under $1,000. It was $1,500 originally, now it's gonna be under $1,000.
What's it gonna be then?
What's that?
What's it gonna be then? I'm just seeing how quick your mouth is. 97 times 10, you can't.
Well, wait a second. Is there tax on it?
No.
There's tax. Point out we have.
Oh, yeah, we're not selling it.
So, 990?
I ordered 15 basketballs, which is on here, too, but if I'm, if I'm sorry with you guys, I'm gonna go in and order this.
What, who are you doing it to?
ESPN Sports.
So, they should have our taxes exempt on, so make sure.
So, it says taxes on here, but they'll probably make.
They should drop that, yeah.
And then I've got one week left of fall sports and then I have put out registrations for girls' basketball, so that's gonna be coming up. One more thing I wanted to talk to you guys about. I've been talking with Travis and Jeff. There's a lot of different things going on over at the baseball diamond and I am not very happy with the school right now with everything going on over there. I feel like we're getting the short end of the stick. Right now, I'm over there redoing the diamond. We, their sprinkler system broke, and we put, how much money did that, Travis?
Close to, close to ten, yeah, when it's all done.
Um, there's just been a lot of expenses that we're paying for, and they give us ten thousand dollars a year. And county told me that there's gonna be some years where maybe we don't spend that with ten thousand on them, but in the last three years, that money's been wiped out. So I just, I really don't think we're getting anything from this, and I think it's in our best interest to, I would like to sit down with these guys and rewrite the contract, because I just, I don't, we're not getting anything out of them paying us ten thousand dollars a year because they're using all that money.
Well, we have a meeting with their board.
When is that meeting?
November.
November second.
November second. And I think that's something that we need to discuss with them and let them know, this is how much we've spent in the last three years. But there's also a lot of labor going on as well.
There, I don't have the contract in front of me, so when I looked at the contract, what I read that contract to say is that they will handle the mowing for the entire season. Now, I understand that they only have the contract from May first to July thirty-first or something like that, but the contract specifically states that the contract is in place from May first to July thirty-first, but the school will handle the maintenance for the entire mowing season. So to me, that means that even when they aren't in charge of it from May to July, they're still handling the maintenance on those other months that would be in the mowing season. So I think, um, I think there's some, what, everybody could read the contract differently, is what I guess I'm trying to say. So I think that we need to look at that contract in the way that it's worded, and maybe there needs to be some changes on that part.
What that is, is Travis and I sat down with Eric the other day and talked about this stuff, and he had a completely different contract than what we have. I mean, it wasn't completely different, but Travis, there were a couple of things on there that were on his that weren't on ours, and
Can I get a copy of that contract, Jeff? I don't have a copy.
Whatever the official
So where did you get your contract?
A copy of that contract.
On Jeff's computer, which county said it was the contract, so I'm, I'm not sure what's going on, I really
I'll send it out to everybody.
There'd better be a signed one for both sides.
Is, we never had our preseason, we didn't sign a contract last year because everything was
Yeah, but it was a long term, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a long term, yeah. It ain't a yearly contract.
It's a yearly, it's
So we never had a meeting with the, the board, so was there ever a contract actually signed?
Exactly, that's what it is, it's a ten-year contract that's supposed to be signed yearly.
Okay.
And every year, you guys would have like a preseason meeting where you would look over everything?
It always in April is when the joint meeting is.
Covid probably messed it up.
Did you have an end of season meeting?
This is our end of season meeting coming up, I mean, we never had the chance to meet again because of everything that was going on, so there's just a lot of different things.
Okay, so
Are you sure? Cause I thought when we added that fee in, that fee that they paid us, that it was, when we did that, we extended the length of the contract at that time. That's part of the reason why they agreed to pay us so much a year, but we needed to extend it over a longer period of time, so we didn't have this rush at the end of the, or the beginning of the season to get a contract signed. That's where I'm confused.
Yeah, and that's, I, I thought we had a ten-year contract.
I don't know if it was that long, but I know
I'm pretty sure it was a ten-year contract.
We did do a longer one.
That it had to be signed every year.
I was told that it's a ten-year contract, that it's supposed to be signed at our pre-meeting at the beginning of every season, because there can be changes
What do you mean preseason?
We have a preseason, we get with the school before and after the summer season, we get with them before the baseball and softball season.
So it needs to be, needs to be signed by January first of every year.
I don't know if it's January first, but the way I remember those meetings is you guys would go over to the park and walk over and look at everything, and the school would say, okay, everything looks good, we're set to go. And they're supposed to return it to, to us the way that they got it, and then at the end, you would have another walkthrough with them, and they, and you would say, okay, yep, it, it looks just as it did when we gave it to you and everything's good.
Yes.
Yeah, which we do that, we get together with them and then we do the walkthrough, so. Maybe the contract's not supposed to be signed every year, that was my understanding that it was supposed to be, and I thought that it didn't get signed this year because we never had our meeting with them, because we weren't able to get together with them because of
And I know we were supposed to meet in April.
We were supposed to meet in April, I believe, April sixth or something, and we never were able to.
I, I don't, I
Bottom of the line, we don't
Do you think it's supposed to be signed every year?
I, I think what we did is, I think it does with their walkthrough, is that they can sign off on it and send it to their board, and then we, knowing that we walked through it, I think was the intent for us is doing the walkthrough is
It's just validation.
Validation that everything's okay.
Everything's in order, but it's not necessarily to another, it's, it's not a sign off on the contract, I think the contract was longer term.
The contract is for ten, but it can be changed in five, or termination of the contract within ninety days.
So, the overall agreement is there, it's, I mean, they have to pay us the money, they have to do certain things regardless if that signature takes place or not.
And the ten K was at our discretion, not like theirs, it wasn't necessarily to always fix
It's not, it's not full ten K either, it's
It's whatever they
Five thousand for the maintenance part of it.
The problem is with that, though, we have a sprinkler system that's broke, they don't want to, they don't want to pitch in any money to get it fixed, we have no choice but to use, I mean, it's not at our discretion, because we have no choice but to fix that sprinkler.
Why?
Well, destroy the cow.
We use it, we're trying to reseed the field for them.
For soccer and that kind of
We're trying to reseed for the next baseball season coming up, so we needed the sprinkler to get that done. They won't help us pay to have the field reseeded, it was pointing one hundred dollars, we asked them for one thousand fifty dollars to help reseed the field, they can't even do that. So, I mean, we're using
It's not they, it, so, it was Eric's.
Yeah. So we need to
That's what that, that's what that money is for every year.
The board's there.
For that, but they give us such a dependence of stuff that, and they, stuff breaks throughout the year, that that money doesn't last, I mean, five thousand dollars doesn't last very far. When you figure, when you figure applications of chemicals
Drayton, before there, our next meeting with them, and maybe you too, can you guys make a list of the things that you've asked for from them, and you've been denied because of funds that they don't want to pitch in and so forth? That way, when we, when we do meet, these are things that we can obviously discuss with them about and ask, ask them why this is happening. It shouldn't be, and the board may, may be clueless, because if one person's talking to you guys and telling you no, 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 but maybe it really needs to go to the higher, you know, I don't know.
To the school board.
Yeah.
The school board might not, you didn't know what
Exactly.
No, no, no.
So
Travis has reached out to the school board, a couple of members on the school board talked to them, the problem is, is they think that it's city property, so the school shouldn't, I mean, they, they think it's
Well, it's real easy, we terminate the contract, they can go find their own place to play.
That's just it.
It's pretty simple. It's pretty simple.
Jeff, I don't know if you want to tell them what their engineer said, but I thought that that was
Oh, about the, the
Their engineer pretty much told us that we're unethical asking them to pitch in to help repair the sprinkler system that's
No, it wasn't the sprinkler system.
Or it was
The, the curve
That was the infrastructure, the, the storm intake.
Yeah.
The what?
The storm intake on Washington that's broke, that has the metal
I think you told us about that at the last meeting.
That has the metal
That they drove over on buses.
That they, their contractor is not wanting to deal with this at all, and following up
We took pictures of what happened, didn't we?
We, we're working through it still, and, um, but yeah, that wasn't helpful, but, yeah. And we checked with Dave, the engineer, today about what's customering these things, just to make sure, so.
I mean, we're
We're gonna keep pressing the case, I mean
I mean, we could have been real mean about it, and we could replace it right then, and if they did it, they would have replaced it, we could have kept charging every time they hit it, I mean, we're nice, put a piece of metal over
Well, and we, we
At the end of the year.
We, we tried, believe me, in the meeting, to have a good, I mean, to be flexible with them, and we're really not met with that. And then it wasn't, in fairness to the schools, it wasn't them, it was their contractor. But, anyway.
That's, that's a different
Yeah, it's a different topic.
I guess the whole contract, I think with Drayton to the warning, is we need a cleaner contract. The way it reads is, and not the way, well, the way it reads and the way it's been working is, they give us money so they feel they can demand certain things, which is stressful enough in its own, let alone, we're trying to work, you know, with seventeen different people over there, there's not one. I think we need to look at cleaning the contract up, and honestly, I don't, I mean, the money's basically just a wash for us, it's not like we're, the city's making any money, it's not like they're saving, well, they are saving money because
But is it costing us money?
It's, it's costing
But it's, yeah.
Okay.
So, but this is what I
Cause I don't want to make money, but I'm not gonna spend money either.
Right, but I think if we get, I mean, delete them paying us, and just tell them, hey, the turf is your, I mean, that's you to take care of.
So, prior to that
Had to do with getting parking, getting some funds together so we could improve the parking that, that is used by the school programs.
But that's not what they took it as, they took it as, so we've, we fixed the fencing around there for them, we've put
You're right, they're making demands on what the infrastructure changes are, and that should not be
Right.
And, but that's That's never been the intent of that cash, that money was intended for the city to use for improvements to the park
Yeah.
That they use in the prime season of the year.
Mm-hmm.
You know, all year.
And, well, two things, like when, when I first heard about this, one thing is, basically, you know, we give them that contract from May to July, and that says they get first dibs on everything over there.
Exactly.
And in, in return, for us giving you first dibs on anything that happens during those months at that park, you're paying us ten thousand dollars for the upkeep and all that. But if the upkeep is more than the ten thousand dollars that they're paying, then we need to look at that, and we need to adjust the contract. You have to remember that prior to this contract being put in place, they paid us a dollar or something like that.
Yeah.
So they're probably looking at this going, well, jeez, we used to pay you guys a dollar, now we're giving you ten thousand dollars, I mean, what more do you want? You know, so I can see where they're coming from and why they're looking at it that way, but we can't lose money. And the sprinkler system was a bigger issue, because we, we had a lot of damage from that when it broke. And so how much did we, how much did that item cost?
And we're still working on it, I mean, we still got
Over ten thousand, is that what you said?
But how much do we have in it now? Do you know, roughly?
So to bore in the new stuff was thirty thousand, pipes and materials and other, we're probably sitting at no labor, cause our labor's not in there yet, I don't know what we have for hours, I have to go back, but we're pretty close to five thousand right now, and that's without bringing in the fill and the new concrete we gotta replace.
So, I mean, let's just say, and this is probably generous, but let's say it's seven thousand dollars for that, and then we're paying twenty-one hundred dollars to reseed a, a baseball field for them. We're, we've pretty much spent their money, and we, that's not including all the chemicals, that's not including any time that our people have put into it, so it's just not, you know, and
They need to cover the expenses of the, of the use of the park completely, and if, and if they want this, you know, premium place to play at, they gotta cover the cost of it, including reseeding. Making sure that it can, that it can water itself, and in my mind, my mind, the, I mean, the city needs and uses the space as well, but they're, they're taking the prime months out of the year. They're, they're taking first dibs on, on the use of that property, and it's not school property, it's city property.
And again, this is just my opinion, but prior to this agreement being put in place, you know, we would use their practice facilities and stuff like that, but they were very restrictive for us. If you remember during that time, we could never use the actual football field, because we couldn't damage the grass.
Right.
I mean, there were, there was a lot of times where we needed something, and they basically were just like, sorry, you're out of luck, we, we can't give it to you.
We do use the gyms for our park and rec program, so that's what the mutual services agreement is about, is, is that, and, and they, and they get to use our parks, but it, it has always felt as if the city gets the short end of the stick. And, and once again, I mean, a ten thousand dollar, five thousand dollar a year, whatever, um, that, obviously that needs to be revisited, expenses go up, deratos happen, um, things break.
Are there other cities that are in this position of rent allowance based to the
And that was what I was gonna bring up, I mean, Jeff, go ahead, you told me
Well, Bell Plain, we had the, the high school had the baseball field at the city park, and we didn't touch it.
I praise my money, because that guy does an amazing job on money field, but if you go look at our high school baseball diamond, it's, it's embarrassing. And I mean, I try my best to keep up on it, and I've got other stuff
And I'll just say, if we take the baseball field back, we're taking my money field back too.
And I will say that, you know, that didn't always used to be the case, we used to have a coach over there who very much put a lot of time and effort into that field, the boys' baseball field, and since he's been gone, it, it has kind of gone to the wayside. He used to do fundraisers to fund dugout repair and stuff like that, I mean, he, he went above and beyond as well, but he's just no longer there.
Real asset when, when we lost him.
I guess just to take away from this, I want you guys to think about, like, we're not really gonna be, I mean, we won't use that space in the next couple of years, we won't be over there at all, really.
Right, once the soccer fields are up here.
Yeah, we'll be out here, and I don't have teams that really use that Diamond One baseball field, that's in right field of the high school baseball field, and I don't use the high school baseball field. So I talked to these guys, and I just thought, man, why don't we just wipe out that cost and have them take over, I mean, have them
They, we can't, the city, it's owned by the city as well, the city
I get that, I mean, I'm not saying they buy it from us, but
But they have to be responsible for one hundred percent of the fees.
Okay, but when it, when it isn't, when it's not, when they don't do the upkeep on it, we're gonna end up having to do it, so I mean, it's
It's ours, there's nothing, there's no way around that.
I mean, how much did your, how much did the cement cost for the trail down to the
Ah, we don't, we, I don't have the numbers on it, but I mean, you know, I mean, I mean, they didn't even figure that in, you know, we put sidewalk all the way down to the bank stop, you know, that, that isn't figured in there, you know, I mean, that, and that's the second time you've had to work on that sprinkler system, you have to tear out, I mean, they border it, you know.
I mean, I just, I think, you know, I think, I think it's going in one person's ear, and I don't think the board's hearing it all, so, I mean, we'll, we'll address that November second. You know, and like I said, if, I mean, if they want to play hardball, I mean, I mean, I hate to say it, but, you know, they can go find someplace else, we'll give you ninety days.
They used to have a committee that did that every year.
We'll give you ninety days, I mean, go find someplace else.
Negotiate with the school?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I mean, that's only a fair way to do something.
Yeah, I, I, I've done that in the past, negotiated that contract.
Yep, I've been on that committee before too.
It was never fun, ever.
What else you got?
I think that's all I got, I guess I would just like to sit down with these two, and I guess maybe somebody from the school, and just look at that contract and see if there's anything that needs to be changed. Because, I mean, it's our, there are diamonds, I think that we should be able to change the contract the way that we want things to be now, but I mean, city, I mean, I don't know, you guys get what I'm saying?
Well, you, you can meet with them if you want to, and then, uh, when we go to that meeting on the second, just have all your ducks in a row to do a presentation at that meeting.
You, you meeting with the school, doesn't mean nothing.
I don't mean that, I just
He means these two.
I mean, to look over that contract and really, what do we want, because if they don't want to sign the contract, then they go somewhere else, I mean, it's either they sign the contract or they go somewhere else, but I think that we need to sit down and really go through that contract and figure out everything that's going on over there.
I'm sure we can come to an arrangement, you know, to, to John's point, what other cities are in this, in a boat like this?
Yeah.
You, you mentioned Bell Plain, a hundred percent, they take care of their field, I wonder how many others do, that we could show the, the school board that, look, these five towns are doing the same thing we are, and this is what the schools are paying for.
Why don't you spend some
You guys need to find it in your budget.
Time working with Jeff to find the other cities that are doing that, and then, like I said, have all of it documented and all your ducks in a row for the meeting.
I'll put some up on my listserv, and usually I can get a few answers off of that from people.
That'd be great.
That's just really what I want from this, I want them to take more pride, I mean, we're letting them use our diamond, I want them to take more pride, I have the softball diamond, one hundred
You're right, that's a great example of where it works, it just doesn't work on Facebook.
So what was there this weekend?
What was that?
What was there this weekend?
On planning, and I have four, there was a softball
For who?
For our fires softball club that
A travel team.
Travel team.
And they pay so much a year to be able to
Fifty dollars a year for team two, sorry, a hundred, because we have a short
Police department, police department report. Anything, Brandon?
No.
Okay, fire chief's report.
Brandon?
I just want to know the truck with the damage is heading in next week.
The tank?
The tank will be covered by the manufacturer, so, uh, the insurance company wants to get the pictures of inside the tank, which can't be done until they tear into it, and they'll determine if they're gonna cover the remaining difference, but if not, uh, my
But if not, minus the mileage and the gas to get up there and whatnot, should be right around 1,300 if we have to cover, so it's not too bad. Then just last, I just mentioned, we had a garage fire this week attached to a house. Everybody did a really good job. Mount Vernon came over. They had a great crew along with our guys. Kept the fire, just holding it off, kept it in the garage. There was no, no fire damage to the house. There was some smoke damage, but the insurance company reached out to me and was pretty impressed, so kudos to all those guys.
It was a very good stop, very good stop.
That's it.
Happy birthday.
Is all your, all your sirens and everything work in order now?
Yep, 100%. Yep. You know, it's probably a little louder now.
City administrators report.
Yes, okay, so got a few things going on. Getting, after the last meeting, my name's starting to get some pricing on some different engineering stuff that we talked about just so we know what we're up against and, and some of that, so. Just looking at a lift station for the industrial park, that's one thing. And then how much per linear foot it charges to run water and sewer mains. So I, I mean, it's not going to be exact, but at least we'll be in the ballpark of knowing where we're, what we're up against. So I thought that's important to at least get that and kind of see. The CARES Act thing, since the last meeting, the state reworked that again and now I, we can claim 50% of our, yeah. So I'm thinking now we could get some, maybe in the area of like $50,000 or more.
Oh, good.
So I got, I'm finishing that up this week. So they've kind of been revising that on the fly, it seems like. And so, talked about FEMA a little, let's ongoing, a meeting, have, not meeting with, but phone meeting, if you want to call it that, Zoom phone, whatever, with the FEMA guy on Wednesday. We have our assessment completed, getting to go over it with him. Mostly it's debris pickup with the, we included though the sirens in this building is another thing. And then the, the damage to the Myers Farm too. But kind of what they look at is what our insurance covers on that and kind of. So if our insurance covers part of that, FEMA won't. So, but I, so I had, one of the things I had to send FEMA was all of our insurance policies, so.
So is that where the wood chipper would come in or not?
Well, the wood chipper, yeah, that's, it might, yeah, we may make a claim on that. And they also, one thing they're really wanting us to include is some sort of mitigation project part of it. I don't know how you mitigate against a derecho, but maybe like something like structural strengthening or reinforcement of some building. That's the one thing we talked about, so.
The wall between.
We're trying to think of something.
Can they fix the walls on the history center though, so they're structurally sound?
That's one thing.
I'm serious too.
No, that's what Jeff's willing.
That's one thing we talked about was the history center. Finally, also, I got a tuck pointer, a look at the his, who came today and he looked at the history center in the library. He just gave me a verbal report about it, but he's going to write up and email me the document. I should be getting that back, but he said the his, the history center needed more work than the library. But he didn't think they were all that bad, so that was, that was pretty good. I was glad to hear that, but I'll have some more concrete for you here coming up on that. Yep, that's it.
Anybody got anything for Jeff?
I don't think so.
Council reports. Let's start with Sarah.
I really don't have anything. Well, I continue to get applications for the city administrator job now. As you all know, we've got interviews coming up this week. So, you know, we'll see how those go. It also was posted until filled. So, you know, basically just trying to get through that.
Hey.
I don't have anything today.
Travis?
I don't have anything.
John?
We had scouting for food, it was past Saturday. The weather was perfect. Boys were a great help. We got another ton of food to sort through and put away and eat with all the time. So I was very happy for the turnout for people gave, people who gave cash. That's all I have.
The sidewalk on Main Street down there, what do we do with that? Since, I mean, we've got cones there for.
We're going to pull those off and put some smaller barricades up there for. She does, she has insurance that's paying for it. It's just, it's a long process. And I told her that, you know, we'll give her, give her the leeway. I met with her insurance agent when it happened, so. It's where that big butternut tree came down. So they had to drive heavy cranes over top of the sidewalk which crushed the sidewalk. So, but there's a process of things they fix. And first they got to get the structural fine because they don't want to fix the sidewalk and then have somebody drive another piece of equipment over there. So it might be that way for a little bit, but she said she's trying.
Where are we at on fixing the street over by school?
They are supposed to show up, I'm hoping next week.
Next week. How about the ones on over by Ward Dakota?
It would be same time. So I'm hoping that Culver can be put in this week so they can get that done to widen that part of that street too there. Where they built that new house and it's sloughing off, so we can get that passed to. Otherwise, we're going to push that project off until spring because I don't want to be plowing gravel up. All went wrong. And have another Main Street issue just only over there.
I think that's it. We got meetings Wednesday and Friday, Steph?
Tuesday, Friday.
Tuesday. Tuesday, Friday.
Tuesday at 6:00, Friday at 5:30. And I still need questions from Travis, Nate and Sarah. Please.
Friday, I may be late. I don't get off the fivin', so.
You got plenty of time.
Football game that night.
She's just really far away, so that's just how that had to be. What will happen is I'll write up the questions and I'll print them off and give each of you two copies tomorrow and one copy on Friday so that you can write down answers to what they asked, so that we're asking all of them the same questions to, you know, keep things fair and move it right along.
Anybody got anything else?
You guys had, you guys had asked about the savings for the solar.
Yeah.
Marcia and I had figured out that we have gotten a 13.5% savings since they've been installed. And she's, she's been wonderful to work with too, just like, no.
Good.
Yeah, she's done well.
Anything else? Manager, how was your first meeting?